Now I'd entertain a motion to amend the agenda, to add to the agenda, and line item that would read authorize the first selectmen enter into a contract with Rothmore and Kagan and design documents for the public works facility. And with us tonight to make a presentation in that regard are Mr. Gilbertson, Adelizzi, and Sorensen. So I'd entertain a motion to add that to the agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And just to refresh everyone's recollection, Chris Sorensen is the Chair of the Public Works Building Committee.
Thank you.
Terry Gilbertson is our zoning enforcement officer among other duties, and also is a friend of the Public Works Building Commission. And Joe Adelizzi is our Director of Maintenance and a member of the Public Works Police. Chris?
Thank you, Nick Selectman. The building committee met last night, and what our goal is to get together, and we want to make a presentation to the Board of Selectmen by the next meeting, which would be in April. And to put all the pieces to the puzzle together, we need a design document phase which would assist us in giving us a cost estimate, and also put together a whole plan, schematic, and a presentation for you in April. And what we're looking to do is have you approve the amount of funds that we're looking to do. Terry came to us last night and explained why you need to go through this process, what it does for the town, what it does to move the project along. And maybe Terry wants to, I'll let Terry talk just a little bit, and explain why and what his outlook is towards the whole project.
Good evening. If you might remember that on November, in November, we last spoke about the Public Works Building Committee. The Building Committee has been working, and you approved in November that those two portions of a four-portion proposal from Rothmore and Kagan having to do with the work. Those, the two phases that you approved have now been largely completed. The committee has met and approved each phase as it has gone along. The next phase, which in November was not identified or funded by you, and not proposed, the scope of work was proposed, but money wasn't put to it. And now the committee desires, and passed with a unanimous vote last night,
Yeah.
that you consider, as you did in November, now the third phase, which is the design development phase. There's a fourth phase, just so that you understand, that there's a construction document phase. It's the committee's choice not to pay for the construction documents until they complete the design development phase. I think it's a prudent decision on their part to do so. And so what you see, which I believe that you have in front of you, is a letter from Chris backed up with a proposal from Rothmore and Kagan. And the letter from Chris asks you to approve what the Public Works Building Committee approved last night, is a fee of forty-four thousand eight hundred dollars for the design development of the Public Works Facility.
And it's clear this is fully funded, line item approved, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, the funds are from the, boy, back, I think it's had to be five, three, six, seven years ago. The town was awarded funds for the remediation of the town facility through the Superfund application. It was close to nine hundred thousand dollars. And that funding was then authorized for this project back in the budget several years ago.
And there's no limitation on using those funds for this?
No, there's, the only requirement was that it was for use for the developed, the construction of the Public Works Facility. That was the restriction.
This would put all the pieces to the puzzle together. So on April 11th, we plan to be here with a presentation to all the selectmen and everyone here so they can see what we got going on. We know what our costs are going to look at, and we're going to have some real concrete information so everyone can see and they'll know what's going on. And this would be the final piece that we need to put it together.
The third.
The third, yes, I'm sorry, the third.
I think once you embrace what, you know, what the committee is in process of doing, I think, I think you're going to be very excited. I know that the committee is. And I think that then will be time to discuss construction document phase, which is an expensive process, which we should be sure about what we're doing before we go to that expense.
Okay, so, any other comments?
Yeah. Question. The, this building, it's been going on for a long time, actually.
Correct, yes.
Trying to do building together.
Yeah.
So I don't know the history well enough, going all the way back. It seems though, at one point, it was a much bigger potential project than-
Yes.
It's been shrinking.
Yes.
And so my, I guess my question is, is it shrunken to the point where, is forty-four thousand dollars going to produce a design that's then realistic to, for the budget and to pay for? Is, are we convinced that it's the right building for us?
I think with the group of people we've had here, with the civil engineers and the architects, sitting down with Warren Connors, the head of the Public Works, we sat down with all the members of the Public Works. They've gone over extensive list of the equipment, the needs what we have, and we set priorities of what we're looking to do. Also, the Board of Selectmen have given us a list of goals of what we needed to achieve. And part of that was, we were going to need a truck wash, and that would have taken care of the fire department, it would take care of Public Works, even the police department. We're also, one of the requests we've been asked too was to put a bay in there so the policeman, or fire, police department would have a workshop down there, so we consolidate everything, and everything's going to be worked in one shop. So all the fluids and everything else are all going to be consolidated. And we think that we have put all that together of all the requirements that have been asked by us, by the selectmen, to make it work for everybody. And hopefully, we got to be able to do it at a cost that would be affordable to the town and everyone else.
Just to add on what Chris said, one of the problems here was the site preparation cost historically, and through the efforts of the committee now, they reexamine that, and I believe those costs have been reduced significantly, so that this, I think, is a doable project now?
Right. We had to do core tests of the whole property to find out what type of soils we had. And you'd be amazed how expensive underneath the ground is to get a building to go up. Costs can be extravagant if you don't have good soil. And that's, that could be a third to forty percent of your project if you don't have good soil. So you really have to do your homework and research, and that's what we're trying to do. So we don't, all of a sudden, oops, wow, look who we hit now. And then, you know, all of a sudden, you got a big number thrown at you to fix the problem. We're trying to create that so we don't have that-
There'd be a lot of progress, and I've done a lot of good work, and I think they've done a great job so far.
I see there's a phase one, two, and three in the building. So is that, is that-
The-
Budget purpose of it?
Well, not really. We think that the building, the site is a building project. It needed to be done in phases because we need to maintain services at the facility for Public Works to provide services to the community. We can't afford to relocate Public Works to another location. So we'll be constructing this, their new facility around them. And I think the committee spent a lot of time studying this issue, and I think has now come to the conclusion that what they're proposing can be phased so that we can build a facility while the facility is in operation. And that's what, that's the story about the phasing. The third phase is actually, you know, the construction of the wash bay, which, you know, could be done with phase one if it was a scale issue.
Any other questions or comments? If not, then I'd entertain a motion to authorize me to sign this contract with Rothmore and Kagan, as indicated in their letter of March 5, 2012, from Chris Sorensen.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you very much. See you in April.
Yep. Okay, so then the next thing on our agenda is our Director of Finance and Operations Report. All right, okay.
Okay. Can I borrow this?
Not at all.
Okay. I have the monthly report through February of 2012. And the result is a small surplus of a hundred, a little over a hundred thousand dollars, which bring our fund balance to three point nine million dollars, or nine point three percent of your annual budget. Couple of highlights that we've gone over in the past continue to be true, including a surplus of approximately fifty-two thousand dollars in our intergovernmental revenue, which is largely due to some grants that we received that we had not budgeted for, namely the video accommodation grant of twenty-two thousand, and some revenue sharing of about twenty-four thousand. A charge for services should generate a surplus of six thousand dollars. There's a possible surplus in conveyance fees of twenty thousand, building permit fees of about sixty thousand, and a possible shortfall in recreation of about forty thousand. So that's, those are some of the big items there. And of course, our interest income remains at all-time low, which is probably going to be about thirty-five thousand, which is very low for, historically. We've done much better. And expenses, our liability insurance about, should provide a surplus of about nineteen thousand dollars. Waste management will provide a surplus of about ten thousand dollars based on some surplus in tip fees for some reduced tonnage. The Country Club of Woodbridge, beginning of March 1, 2012, all the operating expenses for the Country Club will be paid for out of the budget for the Country Club and out of the, which was discussed earlier by Billy Casper. So the operating account will cease to exist on the general fund, and that will be funded by the revenues coming into the course. And this includes pool, facility, golf course. The idea is to get all the expenses related to that facility, except for debt service, into that budget, so you get a complete picture of what it's costing and what it can generate.
Except for-
Except for debt service.
Something in there tonight, right?
That's the fund through March, through April, through April, excuse me, February 20, 29th.
Oh.
That's, that's for. So that funds it through the end of February. Billy Casper takes over March 1st. That's the dividing line.
Gotcha.
So-
Because I saw this, then I saw that.
Right. That's why, that's why I put that in here, so that I can explain that. And so, you know, we're developing that and getting that up and running, and so far so, it's doing very well with that. Some of the departments you'll, may see some deficits in other departments. Overtime particularly, some equipment lines, the fire department, tree removal costs, Public Works. These are all subject to a FEMA application, which has been applied for. And we are just waiting to receive the funds, the notification of when we'll receive the funds. Then we can transfer some of that money back into the departments who desperately need it.
Overtime and police department is subject to, that's interesting.
Yeah, overtime is subject to reimbursement, but straight time is not.
And just law enforcement, or any kind of Public Works?
Public Works also. But most of it was in police for the storm. There's some Public Works, most of the Public Works overtime came from the snow that we had, but-
So it's fire, police, and the fire doesn't get overtime, no?
There's just some small expenditures in here.
We got double time during the storm.
Actually, the biggest part of the fire, of the application was fire equipment.
Mm.
And particularly some of the fire trucks that were used as generators, and some other equipment pieces. Those are equipment rate per hour. The fire trucks are rather high, and so that was a large item on there.
See, I learned something every day.
There you go. Basic company meeting.
There you go.
Tony, I had a couple of questions about the last item on your expenses.
Sure.
First, there's no timetable for the FEMA we-
We applied, actually, we applied probably a few weeks mid-February, around there. She said it takes about five weeks, five to six weeks.
And then is that-
Till, when they submit the application, it goes through the review process, and it goes through the state, and then it goes through federal government, it's several layers.
I wanted to ask if the town applies autonomously, or if it has to be passed through the-
We go through the state.
Yeah, so it does get passed through?
Yeah. The state actually controls the disbursement of the funds. And so we're hopeful for the funds to be dispersed sometime this month.
Oh, terrific.
Hopefully.
And then as far as the overtime costs, I was able to find it pretty readily under the police department.
Right. You see how it's, there's a large portion, a decent portion of that is from FEMA.
Yeah, okay. But then I didn't, it wasn't as easily identified under Public Works, and I wonder if that's because-
It wasn't as, wasn't as much, that's why.
And because it's kind of mild winter?
Right, yeah, absolutely.
People on the street around this, they wonder, they think the town's going to be fat now because we made it snow.
That's correct. It's a large, it's because we had such a mild winter, there wasn't as much as the police, you can't really notice it as much.
If you did not have those two large storms, your statement would have a lot more weight to it.
It wasn't my statement. I would never refuse the town being fat.
Right. Those are two, obviously, two areas, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
That's it, yeah.
Okay, so tax refunds. We have a memo here from Pat Crisco.
There's real estate tax refunds totaling seven thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars, and motor vehicle refunds totaling forty-one dollars and six cents.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve those tax refunds?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass unanimously. Next item, here are line, our funding requests.
Right.
Funding request, six. Is this, is-
The first one is this one? Three thousand.
Yes. Line item transfer number 1112-22 with an amount of three thousand dollars.
This is a transfer of three thousand dollars donated by Bethwood Baseball League for Parks Department Maintenance and the Assistant Person Clay that Adam uses on the field. So every year when we get this donation, we transfer it to Adam's budget for his use.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve that line item transfer?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is any of this used for pesticides?
That's my knowledge.
Pesticide-free clay.
That's right.
I thought we were going to, I thought we were going to have a turf battle there for a minute. Waiting to say that all night. Listen, second on that.
Okay, all those in favor of line item transfer 1112-22, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass unanimously. Next is line item transfer number 1112-23, twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars.
This is for the capital equipment costs related to the pesticide-free issue that we discussed earlier. And if you look on your cash flow, there's a budget that we've been discussing. And the twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars is for the insect sprayer, forty-eight hundred, the overseer for thirteen thousand five hundred dollars, and the storage trailer of four thousand five hundred dollars. Concerning the operating costs, now that you have a plan in place, I will meet with Adam and discuss how that impacts his budget here in terms of timing, in terms of when he needs purchase items, in terms of what he needs through June 30th versus what he needs after July 1. And if there's an impact to this year's budget or to next year's budget, we will let you know. Just to let you know here, the monies that were transferred were from the track improvements that we decided not to do, which were funded last year primarily because they proved to be too costly and too complicated to do. And so I think we discussed that earlier.
I think there are hematomes that we-
That was at Fitzgerald, right?
Correct, that's at Fitzgerald, right. So we decided not to do that, which means there were thirty thousand dollars in an appropriation that was not being used. Twenty-two eight of it would go towards this equipment. The remainder, we were going to put towards the supplies. So that will essentially, so there will be no impact to the operating budget this year or hopefully next year for this project.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to approve line item transfer number 1112-23, the amount of twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass unanimously. Next is funding request number 2012-24, twenty-five thousand dollars.
This is a contingency request to fund fees, additional legal fees that we incurred in the litigation account in this Board of Selectmen budget. And it's basically due to higher-than-anticipated activity and additional expenditures.
So moved.
Toll Brothers?
Largely due to Toll Brothers. Yeah.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to approve funding request number 2012-24, the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass unanimously. Next is the line item transfer number 112-25, eight thousand one hundred thirty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Okay, this is actually in two parts. First is a line item transfer. This covers all of the expenditures in the Country Club of Woodbridge operating budget through the February 29th. And so this was, line item transfers to some funds that we had transferred previously that, at the time, we weren't sure when the new budget would take over. So now that we're sure of the timing of this, this allowed us to transfer some funds that were previously allocated to, say, heating oil, which we no longer need, can go into the, some of the lines, or we do need some funds. You can see through the transfer.
So this is being transferred out of the Country Club of Woodbridge?
This is within the operating budget itself. So this is, last month, for instance, we transferred, say, twenty thousand, or whatever it was, from the operating, from the Country Club of Woodbridge Fund-
Right.
-into the operating budget for the Country Club of Woodbridge. We didn't use all of those funds because March 1st proved to be the date where we switched over the operations. So we had money left over in security and in oil heating and that sort of thing.
Right, okay.
So we're transferring those into some other lines that we didn't have funded. Basically it.
All right, so I'd entertain a motion to approve line item transfer number 1112-25, the amount of eight thousand one hundred thirty-four dollars, seventy-eight cents?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass unanimously. Next is line item transfer number 112-26, two thousand three hundred thirty-nine dollars.
This is to cover the remaining deficit in the Country Club of Woodbridge operating account, which I just picked electric, electricity as the line to transfer it into. This is going to come out of the Country Club of Woodbridge Fund itself, which then will make that operating account zero. In terms of, you know, it'll have exactly the appropriations enough to cover the expenses.
The Country Club of Woodbridge?
Fund will have remaining in it probably close to a hundred and twenty thousand around there.
That was my question. Does that-
Does that include the line of credit that they-
No, that's, that's, would be cash.
That's us.
Yeah. Fifty of that we had to front, which will get paid back by the course. So then the question is, you know, what do you use those funds for?
Right.
Do you, you know, that's your decision.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve line item transfer number 112-26, two thousand three hundred thirty-nine dollars?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. Next item is the health reimbursement arrangement. Authorize first selectmen to execute plan document.
Okay, if you remember a few meetings ago, we, the town has put into place the health reimbursement arrangement for our employees. This is the actual plan document that the town approves, that we signed, that we have on file for any agency or individual who wants to get a full description of the plan, of what it's for, what the, you know, terms are, the benefits, et cetera, et cetera. And then we keep this on file for that purpose. So it's required plan document, I believe it's IRS requires it also.
There's an executive summary of that, or summary plan description?
Right, I put the, sorry, I put the executive summary in there so you can get a sort of snapshot. This is, the executive summary is what's handed out to all employees and to anyone who wants to just know a little bit more about it without reading through the whole plan document.
This is already in place?
Correct, it is, right.
It's operative.
Yep.
And the plan is being administered by Sterling Benefits or-
Correct. Sterling, Sterling Benefits, right.
And it is entirely funded by employees?
No, the, no, the way it works is the town funds the plan, but employees are reimbursed, say, for instance, the hospitalization deductible is five hundred dollars now. Employees are reimbursed three hundred and fifty dollars over five hundred dollars if they incur that expense, if they have to go into the hospital.
Some examples are on page two of that summary plan description, Lawrence, at the top.
Yeah, I saw that.
So what happens is it has a very beneficial impact on our insurance rates because from the perspective of our insurer-
So we're taking a higher deductible than we're actually, the town's making a difference.
Correct.
So they have an actual lower deductible that they pay out of pocket, but town has a higher deductible as far as insurance.
Correct, that's exactly it, yeah.
So I'd entertain a motion to authorize the first selectmen to execute the health reimbursement arrangement?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass unanimously. Next is, oh, one extension, I'm sorry. The next is New Haven Transit District Grant Assignment. Authorize first selectmen to execute.
The, we do this every year, and this is the assigning our grant to the Greater New Haven Transit District, which is the request of the Mary Ellen Indian Services. And then they provide us the services in response. So it said that we used to take this grant directly, and had, you know, sort of a hybrid. And what has happened over the years is we assign the grant to them, and then we get the benefit of their service that are reduced, you know.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to authorize the first selectmen to execute the grant assignment certification.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass unanimously. Next is the Public Records, Historic Records Grant. Designate Tom Clerk as applicant.
This again is an annual grant we receive from the state of Connecticut. And the town clerk uses it to, for this particular one, you can see this description of the project, which is to convert the records to microfilm or to scan, scanned images. This is an ongoing project to try to eventually digitize all of the images down in the county clerk's office at some point.
So I'd, author, entertain a motion to designate the town clerk as the applicant for the historic documents preservation programs in your package.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass unanimously. Next is the authorize the first selectmen to award the energy efficiency improvements for the center building pursuant to the Energy Efficiency Community Block Grant Program.
There's no handout for this, but we have, we have, we have the, we have the final project of our E E C D G, because you're very good at acronyms, I think I got it right. And that's the Energy Efficiency Community Block Grant Program. And our last project is for building envelope improvements at the center building, namely insulation and weather stripping and other items, windows, sealing up windows. And we have a deadline of March to get a project in place, March, the end of March. And so what we were looking for is to see if we can go out to bid and then authorize the first selectmen to award it to the loan bidder. Because if we wait till your April meeting, then we won't have, we'll be late.
What's the value of the grant?
It's a little over twenty thousand dollars. So the total was fifty thousand. We did, we replaced, we put thermostat controls in a lot, almost, a lot of the rooms at the center building. That was one item that we did, because it formerly didn't have any. Another item that we have actually that you approved last month was to replace the doors on each side of the building. Which right now, they whistle. If you've ever seen it, the door just whistles right through the door. And then, so the third is to seal up the envelope.
So the twenty thousand is the remainder?
Correct.
That's the remainder. That was my question.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to authorize the first selectmen to award the energy efficiency improvements for the center building pursuant to the Energy Efficiency Community Block Grant Program.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passage unanimously. Next is the Amity Teen Center. Request to waive permit fee for phased-in roof project.
Yes.
And I don't know what I got there. That handout got to the...
It was earlier in the agenda. The second one agenda.
Yeah, but I think there's a, uh...
Yeah, there's another.
Yeah, why don't we hand that out or we have a...
I understand this is the twenty-fifth anniversary year of the Amity Teen Center.
I think that's right.
It's the twenty-fifth anniversary.
Why did the time fly?
Twenty-fifth.
What?
Anniversary.
I would just say, exactly, the whole thing into the senior center and, you know, these are old people now.
No longer teenagers. They're multine, multi, it's right.
You got a million of them. Oh, boy.
Well, come on, I winged all night just there.
Yep, we know. Thank you. Here. Yeah, it's just a little, yeah.
Okay. So I think what they're, what we're proposing to do here is to waive the fees for the building permit for the phase one of the roof.
Phase one only, right.
The roof restoration.
Right. And we've done, we've done this in the past for other projects at the teen center.
And the amount of that fee would be five hundred and forty-nine dollars and ten cents. And as you know, we contribute to the Amity Teen Center, the town does, about ten thousand a year.
Ten thousand a year, correct.
And it's a, you know, it's a charitable organization and, uh, and we've done this in the past. And so I'd entertain a motion to honor their request to waive the permit fee.
For phase one.
For phase one, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passage unanimously. Okay, thank you. And the next item is the, are some bid awards? The first bid was catch basin cleaning.
Okay, um, we went out for catch basin cleaning and we received seven bids. And this is a good example of why you go out to bid. As you can see, the low bid was Janet's, I'm sorry, high-tech sweeping, powerback. And, uh, that was seventeen dollars per basin, per deep basin. And the high bid was, I think, sixty-four dollars per basin. So you can see, it's a pretty good out to bid. Um, now the second, this is an interesting situation. The second low bidder was Janet's sweeping and property care, which we've used in the past and we've had good success with. Uh, the low bid, because you take the discount, it comes to like seventeen dollars and twenty-five cents. I believe that was the number. The high-tech is seventeen dollars, so the difference is like four hundred dollars.
Was it environmental duty, they sterilize it?
I don't know.
That's crazy.
So, uh, well, high-tech, we checked the references and, you know, and it came back horrible. So, uh, you know, I think Warren, the question was, do you, you know, use a low bidder for four hundred dollars or go with someone that you've used in the past, the extra four hundred dollars?
So are you recommending go Janet's, because we've used Janet's before, or are you?
Well, I, I talked to Warren about it and, um, you know, he said he couldn't find any reason why not to use a low bidder, frankly.
I noticed we're, we're going to award, or person going to award a street sweeping bid.
I was just going to get them.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So, uh, it might make sense because the next bid is Janet's. To spend the four hundred dollars and award them both to the same bidder.
Is that because they'll do them at the same time?
Is there any way to re, to rebid it for the, for combined jobs?
I suppose you could, but the timing on that would be, prove to be, um, not good. Seems we have to get going on some of this stuff.
So we'll, we'll trust their, uh...
Maybe next year we'll do that, if we want to.
Right, right.
I suppose we could do that, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
So that, that's the decision here, or to go with the low bidder, high-tech sweeping and powerback. You know, sometimes that proves to be good, sometimes it doesn't.
It's total of four hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's four hundred dollars is the difference.
They just suck it out, it's that simple.
That's it. Suck it out.
Well, my gosh.
Not much to it. Unless you're environmental, they're doing something.
We have competition now.
Not much to it.
Too silent. The evening wears on, we all get a little slapping.
Yeah.
So what's your preference here?
I think it's a good idea to go with the people who have done it in the past.
Right.
Okay, so is that a motion in favor of Janet's sweeping, property care?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion?
Good idea.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passage unanimously. Next is, uh, street sweeping bid.
Yes, and again, we went out to bid for street sweeping and we received five bids. You see, high-tech sweeping was pretty competitive here also. But if you take Janet's, um, sweeping and property care, it beats high-tech by about fifty cents or something, I have to do the math. I know it's a little bit, a few places.
I'll make that motion that we go with Janet's.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passage unanimously. Next is, um...
It's two sixty-four sixty, forty cents.
The next is Economic Development Commission, wait a minute.
Maybe something about the Amity Gateway project?
No, that we took...
We took that out, yeah. We got reimbursed thirteen hundred dollars.
And it is the website, okay.
Yeah, so the website's next.
The website is next. And, uh, so Economic Development Commission website, design consultant.
So this is just sort of an update for you, that the Economic Development Commission has started to move forward with their website. And, um, we, um, were able to use our existing town website as the framework for that and have this website as a, sort of a subsection of that. As a result, by using Qsend, we don't have to pay for separate website, separate website designer, um, any, there's no, there's no maintenance required because, um, Qsend, we pay maintenance already. So we were able to save a lot of money on this. And so that with the assistance of a consultant, just for a few hundred dollars to get this up and running, we will have a separate, look separate, look and feel wise, but it'll be part of the town's umbrella, so you kind of won't be able to tell while you're on the website, but it'll be part of the town's internal structure. So, I thought you'd be interested in that.
So we don't have to approve it because it's in...
Yeah, it's, it's in the budget and it's...
It's part of our treaty.
And it's, uh, there's not a contract, it's just seven hundred dollars, but I thought you'd be interested in that process.
When will it be, uh, any idea?
I think they're hopeful for March or, or April to have a breakfast, community breakfast, right?
Right.
April, is it April they decided on?
Business leaders of the town, maybe even at the Country Club of Woodbridge.
Right, and to roll it out at that point.
Oh, roll it out there, okay, thanks, that's good.
Okay.
The next item is Public Works Building Committee Request for Eight Twenty Four Review. That's going to be continued until April meeting when they'll make the presentation on the public works, post-public works building and then we'll request an Eight Twenty Four Review from the Town Planning Society. The next item after that is the Jewish Historical Society. And I received a letter from, actually Jerry Shaw did, from Marvin Barker, who is the archivist of the Jewish Historical Society Greater New Haven, requesting they would like to have any photos of members or scenes of the Woodbridge Country Club. They say, he said, "We maintain a file in this organization. Any photos you send us would be an important addition to our archive collection." And I wrote back to Mr. Barker and said that, uh, we would take that up with the Board of Selectmen once we had an inventory of those photos. And I believe in your packet you see that there is such an inventory going back to nineteen fifty-nine. And we have photos for every year from nineteen fifty-nine to two thousand and seven, except nineteen sixty-eight. And they're all over at the Country Club of Woodbridge as, as we speak. And of course, that's been a, a, a significant participant in the Jewish life of the Greater New Haven community over the past fifty or more years. So, uh, we technically own these, the town does. And, uh, my recommendation is that we would, uh, donate them to the Jewish Historical Society.
Are they up on the walls or are they preserved?
They're, they're in a room. They're, um, they're in these really nice glass metal frames up this big.
Oh, okay. So they're not just hanging around there?
No, they're, they're really done really nicely.
So is that, we would give them to them?
Yeah.
Or they'd be on loan from the town for their collection, or how's that work? I mean, I, I'm just concerned that if they're, we've had people come before the board to get that piece of artwork. I don't know if someone comes...
Right, you're right about that.
Looking for a photo of their relative who was the president and now they'd like it.
Well, we've had, had no request for any of these photos other than from the Jewish Historical Society. And I have had conversations with the members of the Jewish community in Woodbridge and New Haven about this. And they, I didn't do a survey, but they all think this is a good idea.
I think it's a safe place, it's not a, a more person, it's a society.
I mean, they will preserve these.
Right.
Right now, they're just, they're in a room or, you know, the closet.
Probably in boxes.
And these are, these are just portraits, these are...
They're, they're pictures of the board of directors, yeah. Should be ten or fifteen individuals.
The whole group.
The whole group.
Well, no, so, but when I read this, it's so bizarre.
I know.
His letter to, uh, photos of members or scenes.
We don't have any scenes.
But we're having scenes.
You would think that the Woodbridge Historical Society would want their old pictures of Woodbridge and around the country club, they might want it.
That's what, that's why, uh...
Well, I've looked at them once, they're the board members. They had a board of approximately ten people.
Yeah, if it's, if it's a...
Right, exactly.
If it's a portrait, that's...
It's a picture of each of the, of each board.
Just put it out there.
And what I was going to suggest is that they allow us to keep the one from nineteen fifty-nine as sort of a historical memento of the Country Club, of Woodbridge Country Club. It's sort of a, hang in, you know, there's some history of the building.
That's the first year.
You want to take it home? No, no!
I, I'm primarily interested in where is nineteen sixty-eight?
Is it the summer of...
I mean, where did that disappear to?
Is it the summer of...
I'm wondering, you know? What happened to that, okay?
Well, your recommendation sounds completely rational.
Yeah, with keeping nineteen fifty-nine.
Right.
Keeping nineteen fifty-nine.
Yeah, but they're, you know, she got the whole, yeah.
And I, I'd be happy to...
Hang out in the corridor, the main lobby there.
Sure, okay. And I'll make the motion that we give from nineteen sixty to two thousand and seven with the missing nineteen sixty-eight missing.
We'll put Susan on that.
It's a bizarre sociocultural thing going on here. I'm not quite sure what it is.
Somebody's going to come and say, "We want nineteen fifty-nine."
Right, Susan, it was the sixties.
Right, right.
There's a reason why it was maybe missing.
Yes, it could be.
Okay, so a motion's been made, is seconded?
Second.
Okay, uh, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passage unanimously, okay. The next item is team representative ratifying recommendation of Human Services Commission to appoint or to reappoint Julie Cooper Alton as representative of the town of Woodbridge.
I'll make that motion, she's, um, doing a great job.
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion?
She's perfect, yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passage unanimously. Next is the town council's report, Jerry.
Yes, we have, uh, as you can see, without going into specifics of the, uh, of the individuals, there are a few, um, delinquent taxes that we've taken action on, or beginning to take action on, and trying to collect, uh, the taxes owed. This is, uh, only done as a last resort and only under extreme efforts after the tax collector has made significant efforts to, to collect the taxes on a voluntary basis after I have had some discussions with at least one of the taxpayers to try and voluntarily get the taxes paid. And we do have these, um, these delinquencies that we feel that, uh, need to be addressed. And as you can see, they have been referred to a law firm that has handled the tax foreclosures for the town in the past, and they are in the process of doing title search rundowns and, uh, sending demand letters. And if nothing is resolved, in a very quick timeframe, they are instructed to institute the foreclosure action. Hopefully, it won't go very far and we'll get voluntary payments after a while, but it seems like some action needs to be done to get this money back into the, get the money back into the town. There is one, as you can see, there's one of these items, uh, on Ansonia Road that involves a significant blight problem and neighbors have come in to see Ed.
What's going on with that?
I participated in that meeting and they're concerned about the state of the condition and the disrepair of the property. We, uh, looked at the, looked at the property and looked at the blight ordinance and we can, um, pursue a lawsuit against the owner based on the town's ordinance on blight. But since there is, um, some, uh, delinquency in taxes on that property as well, we, we believe that, that the quickest and the best way to bring the matter to a head is to start these foreclosures. Hopefully, we can have some dialogue at that point with the owner, who has been unresponsive to Terry Gilbertson's demands for corrective action. And once we start this tax foreclosure, perhaps we can get, accomplish what we want to do, which is to get the house back in shape.
Is this the one over near Millhaven?
Yes, yes. Right, 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 right before you get to Millhaven as you're coming up Ansonia Road. So those three, uh, items are underway, hopefully will result in some successful collections. The other item that I'd like to report on is the summons involving sixteen sixty-one Litchfield Turnpike, which you have in your packet. And that involves the, uh, police department's decision to revoke the license of Connolly's Gold and Jewelry Exchange, I think Gold and Diamond Exchange that operates on Litchfield Turnpike. The, uh, police chief and the police department, after an investigation, felt that there were some significant violations of the permit. And they followed the state statute, which permits the revocation of the, of the, uh, permit. And as you can see, a hearing was held at the police department, according to the statute, where the tenant at the Connolly Gold and Diamond Exchange came forward, presented their case. The chief of police decided that the, the revocation was appropriate. And, um, the tenant hired an attorney to appeal, as they have a right to do, appeal, appeal the revocation. And the case will be pending, uh, and the judge ultimately makes the decision as to whether it was caused to revoke the permit. I've been in contact with the attorney for, uh, the tenant and we have had some discussions about, uh, where this matter should be, uh, should be going in terms of a resolution. It's still very preliminary. The appeal was just filed a couple of weeks ago, not a week ago. There's a return date in March and we will proceed with the appeal in court. And I will report to you as we have further information. So that's that, and we have the, uh...
Jerry, what are they allowed to do down there right now?
So, you know, they, they basically, not, I wouldn't say a pawn shop, but they do a lot of lending on money based on, 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 uh, pledging of assets.
So currently, what are they allowed to do?
They are allowed to continue, they can continue, part of the arrangement with the, oh, one, one other important thing, it's a good point. Part of the arrangement that we made with the, um, attorney for the tenant is that the ordinance does not provide for a stay, in other words, a cessation of the revocation of the permit pending an appeal. So theoretically, they needed to stop at the time they got the notice from the chief that the permit was revoked, they needed to close up. The attorney indicated that he, in addition to filing his lawsuit, was going to ask the court for an injunction to permit his client to continue to operate pending the resolution of the appeal, which probably would have been granted. So we have an informal arrangement that we will allow them to continue until this court case is heard or until July first. On July first, the permit is up, it expires anyway and they need to reapply. The stay does not affect that reapplication for the permit. And please, if the lawsuit does not get to court before July one, which is, if the appeal does not get to court before July one, which is all very likely, the chief then has to make a decision on July one if they reapply for the permit as to whether he should issue the permit initially, again. And he could turn it down and there is no... And he could turn it down and there is no stay. So this theoretically, the, the opera, the business could stop, could be required to stop, uh, operating as of July first. So right now, they can continue to operate based on an informal agreement we have, which was made to avoid going to a court on an injunction. The chief of police agreed with that. And we will see what happens as, as of July first when they have to reapply anyway. So that takes care of that matter. And then we just have something we need for informational decision on the, uh, table, um, the televising of public meetings. And as you can see, we, we, we prevailed on the DPUC to basically continue funding the hundred thousand dollars for the, uh, televising of, uh, our public meetings in town. So this was a very favorable decision. We're all happy about it. And hopefully, it'll end at this point. I don't know if they're going to go any further and appeal this decision. So far, we haven't heard anything. But the DPUC, or Pure as they're now called, agreed with the towns and allowed the continuation of the funding of a hundred thousand dollars. And I think that's all I have. Unless there's questions.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the town clerk's report. I entertain a motion to acknowledge and concede that report.
So hold.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Message unanimously. Next are minutes. And we have before you draft minutes of our special meeting on February fifteenth, two thousand and twelve. And I entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So hold.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Message unanimously.
Just to get back, I, I left out the MDM issues. Uh, there's continued negotiations and discussions about the, the debt that, uh, the town, uh, believes that the MDM owes from the prior year's operation of the Country Club of Woodbridge. And as you can see by Attorney Paredo's letter to, uh, Mr. Manchet, Mr. Machetti, uh, he owes, we claim and we believe that it is due and owing a hundred and fifty thousand for non-payment of installments that were due under the agreement, as well as an outstanding water bill of a hundred and one thousand dollars. There were two meetings in the last two or three weeks with, uh, MDM and their attorney. Ed, Ed attended, Tony attended. I was at one of them. I was away for one of them. And Jim Paredo was there. We've made some progress in trying to settle this, although we're not close to what, I don't think we're close to what the town insists. We're talking about, um, repaying the debt by services to be performed by, um, Mr. Manchet. Is that correct?
On course construction.
On course construction. There is no agreement yet. Um, and we, we, we're getting close to the point where I think the town will probably recommend that settlement discussion stop unless we have something favorable and let the courts decide that issue as to whether the money is owed or not. But we are having a, having a difficult time, having a meeting of the minds on the settlement. There is an issue, uh, there is an issue as to the, uh, URL site, as you can see. And hopefully, we can get that back. I think Ed mentioned that earlier.
Are you saying it's, um, right now, it's some work done at the course is a potential solution to this? And that's...
Yes.
We've been talking, we've been negotiating about that. And, uh, the question is, what's the value of the work to be done, uh, in relation to what is owed?
The party that owes us is MDM Golf of Woodbridge LLC.
Right.
So that might be the little chasing thing.
Well, you know, there's, yes, and that's what they're counting on. But there are other ways to skin that cat. We, you know, there are a lot of, we're talking about other theories of which to proceed against perhaps other companies, perhaps, uh, um, other entities to, to get our payment. They're all very hypothetical and not, it's, it's clear yet. But they're, obviously, you know, the question is the viability of collecting, uh...
There's no personal guarantee?
No, no.
Tied to the MDM? Was MDM Golf LLC what we contracted with for the two prior years?
Yes, yes.
And that was always the entity that we...
Right.
So we never required a personal guarantee?
Well, we might have required it in negotiations. It just was not part of the, part of the agreement. And, uh, we, we felt that overall, the agreement was something the town needed to do at the time, when we had a very short period of time to hire somebody after the club purchased it. And that was, that was the result.
And he was the only bidder?
He was the only bidder. We didn't have a lot of options at that point.
Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the first selectmen's report. And you can see in your packet, uh, there was a photo of myself in white robe and receiving a donation of three thousand dollars for the play for the ball fields. Um, on February twenty-fourth, Tony and I met with Congresswoman Delaro and area mayor's the first selectman. Had a lunch in New Haven as she reviewed, uh, what's going on in Washington and the limited federal grants that might be available for the town of Woodbridge. I don't think there really are any this year. There are no more earmarks, as you, as you probably know. So the earmarks implemented by Congresswoman Delaro were all very worthwhile. We were the beneficiary. One of them was our farm firm. Was it three hundred and fifty thousand? So, uh, I attended a meeting in the Beecher Road School Building Committee, uh, which Greg is a member of, last Friday. And they're making progress on, uh, preparing a proposal for phasing in renovations to the Beecher Road School. And hopefully, over the next month or two, they'll have something concrete to propose. Um, in your packet, you will see that in this month's edition of Connecticut Magazine, they rank the towns from sixty-five hundred to ten thousand. And Woodbridge, uh, appears as number eleven. However, the only reason that we're down so low is because of the crime rate. We're listed as number twenty-two. And crime is determined by the average number of major crimes committed in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, and two thousand and nine for one thousand population. On the other criteria, we rank number three in education. Easton was number one and Redding was number two. We rank number three in education. Uh, number five, and I think it's, uh, leisure. And, and in cost, I don't know if this is a...
Oh, here it is, here.
Yeah. Um, yeah, leisure is number, uh, three, actually. Number five in economy. And number twenty-two in cost. So we're right behind the Eastern or Redding is what, what the cost of a home would be. So Woodbridge, I think probably by virtue of its location between New Haven and Waterbury, uh, is, 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 that's why the crime rate is such. Although I think we have an excellent police department. And given our location, I think that's what, so... I think overall, Woodbridge is doing very well, at least by those statistics. So that's my report. Joe?
Yes, sir. I'd like to let everybody know about a big celebration that's coming up on Sunday, September the twenty-third, at twelve-thirty PM. It's sponsored by the Amity and Woodbridge Historical Society. And it's a Civil War celebration. The chairman is Dr. Marvin Aaron's. The committee is rather extended because it includes many members of the Woodbridge Historical Society. The Amity, uh, will be the scene of the muster and the beginning of the parade. We will be having a commemoration ceremony. The parade will have Company G of the Fourteenth Connecticut Volunteer Infantry, which will be a march and drill team that will march, followed by the Connecticut Blues Fife and Drum Corps, which are twenty men marching and doing a concert. Uh, the town is, the town of Woodbridge has paid a stipend to each of these two organizations. The details, the muster will be at Amity High in the parking lot. Parking for visitors will be at Amity High School and the library. The march route will come from Amity, turning left onto Newton Road, turning right on the meeting house, going past the library, going past the center building, and eventually going up on what we discussed was now a parade ground, which became a ball field tonight. In between the soldiers and Marine Corps, we're going to have Abe Lincoln, who will be a Woodbridge student selected by the principal of Amity High School. And young Mr. Lincoln will be dressed up in a costume appropriate for eighteen sixty-two and sixty-three. There will be further participants who will be marching. Our first selectman will deliver the Emancipation Proclamation, first part only. And he will be henceforth known as Mr. Ward Hill Lehman. And he'll be the marshal of the Gettysburg Dedication. He also will be dressed in the eighteen sixty-two. They've given me an assignment. I'll be dressed accordingly, but I just follow along. The president will be of the Amity and Woodbridge Historical Society. Mr. Don Menzies will serve as the master of ceremonies. And he will also be dressed accordingly. And he will be Secretary of State William Seward. He'll probably read something in the, in the process, because he's going to be the emcee. The superintendent of the Beecher Road School, Dr. Guy Stella, will also be one of the costume personnel. And he is going to be the Pennsylvania War Governor, Andrew Curtin. Then lastly, we will have Professor Wilson Kimlin from Yale University and Amity and Woodbridge Historical Society reading the honor roll of the dead Civil War soldiers of Woodbridge. And he will be portraying Secretary of War Edwin M. Stanton. This should be a terrific educational thing for the kids and for all of us, because none of us magically would say, "I served in the Civil War." That's not true.
I'd watch the edge of dress, though.
Well, we're all going to be...
We're going to be there for that.
The costumes, we're all going to go to the same place. David's bridal shop in costume department. We're going to have tails and a cutaway, a vest, black bow tie and a white shirt. Young Lincoln will have a black beard with a top. Other details will be the marching layout, which will be leading the soldier, the soldiers will lead off. The people I just identified will be in the middle. We will be backed by the Amity High Course, the Beecher Road School Course. And we will do, like we did at Veterans Day, will shut part of Meeting House Lane down. The parking, the bulk of the parking should be at Amity. Should, that should not be a problem. The only problem we have is you've got to make a prayer to somebody that September twenty-third doesn't rain, because we do not have a rain day. So that's it. Oh, sorry, you're a hurricane. Or a snowstorm. We get any of that. Does anyone have any questions on our numbers?
Were there no women in eighteen sixty-five?
No, ma'am.
That's true. And that, that...
It's an interesting point.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm glad you mentioned it.
Leave it to me to cause trouble. But seriously.
No, because we have invited the committee. Not me, but the committee invited, uh, Congresswoman Rosa to, to come, which she may do. But no speeches by any of the politicians, other than our pretender over here. Uh, but, uh, Representative Claris has been invited. Again, no, no speaking, because in those days, there were no women up on the gazebo. There were no women speaking or taking part in this. Again, don't forget.
We're not endorsing that concept.
No. We're just doing historical correctors.
We're also not modeling correctly. But, okay. All right.
Well, you can't recreate it.
And this is part of the, uh, this is part of the sesquicentennial, is that it?
Wow.
How are you showing up?
Wow. Hey, I had to get his... Four years I had to get his burger dress.
He's really working on it tonight, Kevin.
We're going to work Lawrence into this.
Yeah, totally. He could dress up as the woman.
Yeah. Mary Todd Lincoln.
The reason that...
Not even going there.
I'm going to raise my hand and get ready. The reason that we're going to have this at this time is because Dr. Aaron's was not able to get either the marching band or the Fife and Drum Corps until the September twenty-third date. And that's, that's why. These guys are professionals at what they do. And it should, should be a good time.
Yes, sir. Thanks, Joe. Joe's been coordinating, putting this all together. So it should be an interesting event. Okay, Lawrence?
The Recreation Commission met last Wednesday night. And I brought up the, uh, pesticide use on playing fields issued during public comment because the Board of Education was scheduled to meet at the exact same time on the exact same day. Board of Ed had been postponed after, uh, Washington's birthday. And so anyway, so the Recreation Commission, uh, reiterated its concern about, uh, going wholesale into this pesticide-free, uh, program. And, um, and restated its preference for a more measured approach. And all, all of that we've been through already this evening. Uh, I then excused myself from the Recreation Commission to attend the Board of Education meeting. And among, uh, news from the Woodbridge Board of Education, one of the two playgrounds, uh, you might remember that both playgrounds were shut down last fall after the, um, insurance provider deemed them, uh, unsafe. Anyway, one of the, one of the two playgrounds will be replaced, uh, the end of this month already, last weekend in March, I believe, is what Dr. Stella said. And, um, and he said he got a ninety thousand dollar playground for seventy thousand dollars. And it's going to be installed, uh, through a collaborative community effort. So, um...
The north or the south?
The south. I'm sorry, I can't... South, it looks like.
I'm going to the Civil War with that one. But go ahead.
It looks like the south, great. And, uh...
The south will rise again.
My good elderly.
And Dr. Stella referred to it as, uh, as something of a barn raising that is planned.
Oh, next, I'll be fine.
So, um, so that's coming up the end of this month. And, and the children will have, you know, the students will have a playground, access to a playground again. The, uh, the Board of Education's search for a new principal is underway. And, uh, you might remember that, um, that this is a particularly critical search because the, the school is moving to a one school, moving back to a one-school model. Beginning, uh, next year for the twelve, thirteen school year, there will be, there will be just one principal. And, uh, and so the Board of Education is looking for that principal, uh, starting now. There is a search, uh, firm engaged to help the board. And they are, uh, taking applications, uh, now. And then the third thing I thought I'd mention, uh, because it's, it's a little different. The, uh, the board adopted a school calendar for the twelve, thirteen school year with a couple of changes. Um, the school will convene both Election Day and Veterans Day next November, or this, this November of twenty-twelve. And, um, and what they're planning to do is, uh, is have a school day, but with special programming to underscore the, um, the activities of that day. Uh, obviously, free elections in, in, in our democratic society. And then, uh, and then the contributions of veterans, uh, a week later. So school will be in session Election Day and Veterans Day, but with special programming to commemorate those occasions. There was also a presentation about, uh, the new standard, new reading standards that are going to be engaged at Beecher Road School across all subject areas. That was an interesting presentation, I thought. And, um, and board members are interested to see what the Board of Finance, uh, decides about its, uh, proposed operating budget for next year. That will happen August twenty.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow. Susan?
Uh, the Library Commission did not meet. And everything that happened at the Golf Commission, we've pretty much already discussed. I would just like to make a comment that this commission and the Billy Casper Group are keeping a zillion balls in the air all at the same time. And at least from where I sit, it looks like we're in very good hands.
I attended the Human Services Commission meeting last night. And they reviewed the Board of Selectmen and Recommended Operating Budget. There is a problem with the gas stove. I guess you might be aware of that.
I am.
From the church. That it's too big.
Yeah.
And the problem is, it, it, uh, you'd have to replace the hood, which wouldn't be a problem, except that there's things on either side, so we can't replace the hood. So... So I'm not sure how it's all going to work out. There's a possibility there's another stove. But, so stay tuned. But we may be back to putting that money back into the budget. So I just thought I'd let you know about that. Um, Mary Ellen thanked, uh, everyone who was responsible for this. I'm assuming Jerry Shaw, good job, especially. Everyone, uh, has gotten this, I guess, in their mailboxes at home. And it's, you know, was very, very well received. Uh, the Home Alone Course was, is scheduled for April eighteenth. Um, and I guess the next thing to tell you is that there'll be a panel on the impact of divorce on children. And Susan will be participating in that. It's going to be held at Beecher Road School with, um, Marcia Leibowitz from the Children's Divorce Center. And I guess they did this several years ago and it was very well received. I guess they did this several years ago, and it was very well received, so they've decided to do it again, and I'm assuming it will be unfortunately very well attended.
I hope not, but...
Yeah, exactly, yeah, unfortunately, right, and, well, I think, I guess it's a good thing that it's, you know, it's out there, and there will be childcare provided for people who are in the audience who'd like to attend. Twenty students, sponsored by Youth Services, are going to be chosen to attend a special program at the Hopkins School on May fifteenth, in memory of a student who passed away, Adam Krieger, and it sounds like some kind of a, one of those, what are those outward bound things, it's a rope course and all sorts of things like that, it sounds very interesting. And the lady who runs it, turns out, is Todd Fabian's wife.
Oh.
At Harvard Hopkins, so they found that out when they went to do the research on it.
It's a pretty cool course they have out there.
Yeah.
It's in the woods on the far side of the ball fields.
And I guess Nancy Fundson, she tried it last year and did quite well, challenged herself, so it's interesting. The Youth Services Newsletter, if any was, anyone's interested, please mail that to over four million students. If you guys want to look at that, it's kind of interesting, you're in there. And apparently, they had to ex, what happened?
From outside, yeah, okay.
Okay, that's all right. They've had to extend the nomination process for the First Selectmen's Youth Award, because they've only had one nomination so far, so you have now until Thursday, March, Thursday, March tenth, that's this week, so, if you know anybody.
That poor person who applied, I didn't get it, though.
Well, I think that they want to have more than one, but, you know, it'll be what it'll be, right? Next Tuesday, they're still looking for volunteers, if anyone can come to the St. Patrick's Day Luncheon, they didn't have a lot of people, I guess, respond, it's kind of a crazy week because it's school, a lot of students are out and things, so, anybody from Town Hall, it's at next Tuesday at noon, if you can make it, yeah, the thirteenth, yeah, so, just show up at noon if you can do it. On Wear Red Day, which was on Valentine's Day this year, I guess the town employees collected a hundred and sixteen dollars, which is going to be credited toward the Woodbridge Team for the American Heart Association Heart Walk, which will be this year on June second, and the next meeting of the commission is for Monday, April second, and the Fire Commission did not meet in February, they will be meeting next Monday, the twelfth, I have no report from them yet.
Thank you, Beth.
You're welcome.
Tom?
The Board of Ed did not meet, they meet next week, and they had a Facilities Committee meeting that was canceled for tonight. I did attend the Beecher Road School Read Across America with Tony, and that was a lot of fun.
Yeah.
Read two classes, two separate classes, and it was good, I think I'm going to continue to do that. I've missed it the last two years, I just couldn't do it, but it was fun, so.
Great.
I attended that, too, that was fun.
Oh, I'm sorry, you were there, too?
Yes, Dr. Susan's birthday, land use.
Oh, and Joe was there, thank you.
Boy.
I'm looking at Tony, I'm sorry.
TPZ met last night, so there was supposed to be an application for the demolition and removal of Blue Check Deli, so that did not happen, and it seems like, for whatever reason, that's not going forth right now.
You mean demolishing, removal, and something else going in its place?
They went through inland wetland first, and got approval for demolish, removal, rebuild, basically the same size structure, and so the next stop was TPZ, there's a proposed buyer, I don't know if it means that that deal's not happening, but they did not, the application was not heard, so, that's interesting, but, and TPZ started their first work session on the town plan of conservation development, the same thing for conservation, Conservation met on the sixteenth, and that was one of the things they did, was have a work session. QOP had a special meeting last Friday, we basically heard their update, and inland wetlands had a special meeting on March tenth. In February, on the fifteenth and the seventh, there was a cease and desist order on twelve and fourteen Zach Hill Drive because of extensive excavation, filling, grading, stumping, clearing, taking place without proper permits, and the situation seems to be solved, there's some back district permits, but not our town permits, but everyone's on top of now. That's it.
Good, great. Okay, any other business that we have, Ron? If not, then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and we'll see you on April eleventh.
Second.